Good evening, welcome to night school board meeting. It's Monday, August 12th, 2019, six o'clock. We're in the Susan Teller-Lagley Boardroom at the 1887 Building. I have to call the meeting or ask Mr. Teller to call, please.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayhart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
We do have a quorum, we will continue. I will note that this meeting has been noted for state statutes. Judging by the audience, I would say we don't have any community participation. Unless we do. Otherwise, we'll dispense with reading that and go to the high school baseball team overnight travel requests.
All right, thank you. My name is Chad Henslowe, I'm the head baseball coach. Oh, there you go. You scared me for a minute. And just to lead it off, so this was our third year of going to Myrtle Beach for spring training and playing some games down there. This year, we've played five games. In the past, we've played four. It's been a great trip. I guess one thing I would say, and you know, kind of this picture is Elkhorn travels very well. You know, this is kind of example of how many not only players, but parents and grandparents and siblings we get. And it's pretty amazing. The other thing is, our student athletes that you're gonna hear from, they're always on time, we've never had a problem. They're, we've never had to discipline or even talk to anybody about any behavior down there. They represent very well. So I guess to start, we just want to thank you for allowing us to go and allowing to take this trip and continue to take it. We think it's pretty valuable. Can I do the, can I give another clicker try? I know my first time ever, no. I ruined it the first time ever. So just a couple of pictures from last year's. I don't know, I'm kind of a right now. Just don't write quick. The first time was training.
He's out of control, no pressure now.
Just a couple of pictures from the trip. We have the opportunity, all the hotels for the teams involved in the spring training are on the beach. So the kids get to take advantage of that. Spend a lot of time together, a lot of games, a lot of practice. But also a lot of, we do journaling on the way down and goal setting and kind of projections of, you know, what do you want to be, who you want to be, how are you gonna get there? How are you gonna make that happen for you? And not all of them have to do with baseball. In fact, the first year, it was a good thing, but I kind of kicked myself on the way back. We meet with all players then, after we've journaled on the way down. And one-on-one with each one for about a half an hour. And the one player said, "Well, I don't think I'm gonna play." And he was a senior, and I'm like, "Why?" And he said, "Well," he asked that one question, like, "Why do we play and why do we enjoy doing this?" And I really couldn't come up with anything, so I thought, "Well, maybe I shouldn't do this. I should spend time doing something else." I thought, "Well, maybe I shouldn't ask that question." But it was, it was interesting that he reflected on, "I don't really like this as much as I did. Why do I play? Do I play just because I'm playing?" You know, he was a four-point-oh student and a really smart kid and had a lot of things going, so he spent time doing that. So yeah, so I just, real quickly, a few of the guys wanted to say a few things about the trip before we move on to talking about 2020. So Austin, you want to start us off?
Hi, my name is Austin Bassel. First off, I'd like to thank you for letting me be here. Myrtle Beach trip is very, very helpful. I think, based off the games part, sometimes for first games, you're a little rusty and it helps you, it helps you break out of that rust. And so when we come back and we play our conference games right away, we already have that first step out of the way, so we're already ready to go. And you already see these other teams, like, doing some things that we were doing in Myrtle Beach, and we already got those things out of the way. Plus, the, like, the team bonding stuff is really helpful. We're away from our parents the whole time and we're in a whole different building. And we're in rooms with people that we aren't, like, very close with, so it helps build strong relationships with them. And it helps us, like, get to know each other very well, since we're there for, like, four nights and we're in the same room pretty much the whole day, other than the games, so yeah.
I'm Finn Weber. I've been to Myrtle Beach two times. And I remember my first time, I was a sophomore and I was roomed with a bunch of seniors. But I, I kind of got to know them a little bit more. And then that kind of just coasted into, like, a very good season. And I think without Myrtle Beach, when I got to know those guys, you know, and I would've struggled with, like, starting off the season better, you know? And I just think that Myrtle Beach is an essential part of every single season. And I, going down south and playing in actual good weather when it's not raining all the time, you know? It's probably snowing in the spring, but, you know, it's, it's fun every year. Thank you.
I'm Josh Brogren. My first trip was last year, so it was pretty cool going down there. I've never been down there, seen everything. Again, like, getting to know everyone else, so it was my first time down there. And I was roomed with also a couple seniors and stuff, so... But in the end, I really got to know the people and it was a lot better playing the games with them because I wasn't really worried about, like, what they were gonna do and stuff. But, so, I, yeah, I had a lot of fun. The team bonding is a big thing and it really, like, really, like, wanted me to go there again. And I really, really enjoyed it. Thank you.
My name is Noah Anzalone and I've gone on this trip every year that we've had it. And I'd like to thank you guys for letting us go on this trip. I think it's a big part of how our team works. Our team's really family-focused. We all have pretty good relationships and Myrtle Beach is a big part of those relationships. And also, like Austin said, helps us get in that groove so we're ready for our regular season. I just think, overall, just build a good team of all chemistry and get to know how people work together. Thank you.
So Kane is not gonna speak. He got to go on the trip, but didn't get to play only by default of he was in my family, so like, we're going. So he'll get his shot this year. But again, just to remind you all of kind of how the trip goes, that JV1 players, which is typically the sophomore team, and returning varsity players all get the invite for the next year. So anybody that played JV1 this year and returning varsities get the invite to go for the following years. And we'll take as many as that is. We don't want to seclude anybody. And as far as the room thing, we purposely look at all the kids and see who are friends and we split them up. And they all know each other, but yet they don't all know each other as well. And it's worked really well where it's uncomfortable at first and they get comfortable with uncomfortable, per se. And some neat friendships and some neat groups come out of it that you, that you didn't expect. So, thank you. Moving into 2020. I have to ask, what's, why'd they do that outfield like that? What's the story? All of the ballparks are modeled after old ballparks. The one you see with the, with the weird, with the weird jet out was called the Polo Grounds in New York. And actually, there's a funny story about Elkhorn. Some of the guys know this. We were, we were winning by three runs at the end of a game. And they had bases loaded and it was the last inning. And guy hits a ball to center field that takes a couple of hops, our center fielder, whose chance won't be named, but was coming in on the ball, thought routine play, no big deal, couple runs score, we're still good, we still got two outs. It goes under his glove and it goes all the way to the back of that little thing in the outfield. And he gets an inside-the-park homerun and we lose. So, so that field kind of haunts us a little bit. I probably, I probably shouldn't have put that on there. But anyway, so 2020, some new challenges for us. Quickly, I think I went over a couple of these. We keep the cost down through fundraising. All the kids participate in the card sale. They help run a youth tournament in the summer in order to raise money, so we can keep it at that $2.25 per athlete. Myrtle Beach, we went through that, Jones Coast travel. So traditionally, our season starts a week before spring break is our first day of practice. And our first day of competition, or allowed competition, is the Tuesday of spring break. This year, for some reason, it moved back. So our first day we can scrimmage is, we start practice on the 23rd. Our first day we can scrimmage is the 28th. Our first day we can compete in a game is the 31st. Where I'm heading with this today is asking if we would be allowed or it would be permissible for us to leave the 26th and arrive home on Thursday, the 2nd, which would mean missing some school the week after.
So they miss four days.
They would miss four days. I guess one thing about our team is they truly are student athletes. Over the last three years, our cumulative GPA as a team has been 3.3 or above. And we would be willing to add to the journaling, some online learning. We have Wi-Fi on the bus. We would be willing to take some time during the week to allow them, you know, evening time and things like that to meet in their room and do some studying.
We have a few teachers that are, that go with, at least one.
Mike Storely is one, yes. Yep. So that's the challenge for this year. And what that would allow would be four varsity competitions, three JV competitions, and obviously the rest are some of the things that we've already talked about here. And we're asking for your consideration.
And they'll work with the teachers for their classes and homework and all that?
Yep. Now, the challenge with that may be we'd have to get to those teachers the week before spring break or that week after spring break, whatever that might look like as far as work. It also could look like a nightly check of checking in and emailing teachers saying, "What can I do, where am I at?" It's certainly a new challenge and...
Jason, we have to try and, we switch classes right before break. We're going into all new classes.
Where is that?
The trimester ended that first or second week, Dan Keel and I just looked at this, of Mar-, I think it was the second week of March, so the two weeks before spring break.
So they have some time in their new classes?
They would. They would have, I believe it was almost two weeks in their new classes.
Okay, that would be...
Because they're, they're 12 weeks long, so, you know, almost three months, that's, right? And I'm trying to, because usually we do that, the spring break, I mean, I even went double-checking, and John talked to me, it was, because usually we do the last...
The last full week of March.
Well, not the last full, because like, in the 20, on the, the following year, it goes into March and then April.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which is usually the last week in March.
Is it WIAA that messed us up this year?
I don't, you know, I can't find an answer from anybody or asking around why they made this shift.
But it was WIAA that made the shift?
It was WIAA that made the shift and it was kind of abruptly.
Okay.
And not even Dan Keel has been able to find the answer yet from anybody as to why. And so I don't know if... It's because of the number of practices you have before you can do a game. Yeah, but I just mean pushing it back instead of leaving it the same.
Because it used to be the week before.
Always, yeah. And I don't know if this is to straighten something out, if it's a one-time deal, if we'll never have to deal with it again and it'll be shifted back to the way it was.
Wisconsin weather.
I mean, do they run the, do they keep running those, like, those college tournaments every week for... For college and high school, they run it in, through Easter. Okay, so they're, so, yeah, it's all the WIAA that's taken away the flexibility of that, that start. For when our break is, yes.
Yes, so when this, this camp is, it's only that week, I mean, we...
No, it runs from latter part of March through Easter is when high school, college, spring training they call it. So high school, college teams are down there. And then it shifts in June to youth tournaments at the same facility.
But I'm saying, like, on the 23rd, it's not available, like, that week.
It is available, we can't compete until the next week. That was the trick, because WIAA says you can't...
Because I'm not thinking that is competing because you don't get anything out of that.
But they still count for a non-conference.
They do, they do count, okay. I didn't know that they did that. Because you don't do that with wrestling, you go and you practice, it has nothing to do with that.
You can't count on these practice games. We can count one on the weekend as a scrimmage, but then, no, not till Tuesday, you can't. And you're only allowed one scrimmage. So we were gonna do one JV scrimmage, one varsity, Saturday, Sunday, and then a doubleheader varsity and a JV on Tuesday, and then one game each on Wednesday and then hop on the bus.
Our parents, have they voiced any opinion or have really put it out to them yet?
I have. What I do is I send out a sheet with all the returning kids that are eligible. It's like a verbal commitment, who might be interested in going. And then I revisited that at the end of the season to go, "Hey, here's some challenges we may face." And nobody has voiced an opinion. My thought is, if we were able to go, I would revisit that again and assure that everybody understands and that if you don't feel comfortable with that with your son, that's perfectly fine, I understand that.
As long as they can work it out with their, I mean, we take trips, we take trips to go to Europe during school. As long as we can work it out and they, you know, are getting their education. I mean, this is a piece of the education, but as long as they get the brick-and-mortar education and families have the ability to choose to send their child or not send their child, I think it's a great, my, all my kids did camps and it's definitely a learning.
Whether they go or not wouldn't affect whether they play, right?
No. And it hasn't. And we've had kids in the past that have chosen not to go for whatever reason. And certainly, when they pick right up, they would practice with the kids on the freshman team that did not go. So they just practice a whole week with them to keep up.
I think he's got everything covered. I think he has everything covered.
Yeah, looking for a motion.
Is that a motion, Mark?
Yes, I'll make him to motion.
I'll second.
And has been moved and seconded to approve the overnight travel requests to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina and Appleton, Wisconsin as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one more request after that one.
You have the summary.
So we're planning to go to the state tournament, so I want to get that overnight approved right away.
Yeah, I love it.
So I don't want to have to revisit this again during the season. So what I'm asking is for an overnight, three overnights in Appleton, so that when we are attending the state tournament, playing on that field, that we're already covered. And then I'm done.
You just have to notify us for sure that they, when they, they go, that they're definitely going. That's all we ask, just send us an email.
Okay.
Technically, we're already approved.
There's no school, so you're good.
If there's no school, then, so we're covered on that.
So moved.
We just approved, we actually approved a motion because then they're...
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate you.
Thanks. And thank you for letting me use the mouse. You're welcome. Much improved, John. Thank you. There's hope, there's hope. All right, thank you guys. All right, thanks, guys.
All right, so our cash flow borrowing, true.
This proposed resolution would allow the school district to meet its anticipated cash flow needs for the upcoming school year. It's in a resolution format because that's what required to kind of go through this process and the paperwork associated with it. As I think most of your, where years ago, we used to do a actual promissory note and borrow money for the entire school year. But our cash position has improved over the last five or six years. So at this point, we're really just doing a line of credit with one of the local banks. And I think I included, there's a statistics sheet, Jason, if you click to that. So back out of this, this is just regulatory stuff. The statistics sheet, they're just below the resolution.
Yeah.
If you click on that.
That really...
Right there, yeah. That gives you this more of the history. The proposal would be up to $2 million, dated September 3rd and maturing August 31st. With, it'd be a credit union, is it the prime variable rate, which actually is lower now, it's by like two to five...
I was gonna say, when I saw the 5.5, I thought, I think it's lower than that.
Yeah, it is. It's, it went down a quarter percent, so. It is lower now, then I think below that, I just put the history of our borrowing over the years. And the amount we do now is really fairly insignificant in terms of probably cost compared to what it was years ago when we actually borrowed for the entire school year. And then the, the time involved, really, in terms of when that happens, I think is on sheet two. We really have two dates. One is at the end of November, early December. And then the, the other time is at the end of May, early June. And you can kind of see the timing, if you click the sheet two, Jason. You'll see the, the timing, I think, is about nine days in December and I think in about seven days or eight days in May-June is the timeframe for our borrowing. It really has to do just with the timing of when we receive state aids and tax levy information. There's always proposals through the budget of maybe adjusting that so we receive more of our monies earlier. And for our district, if that happened, that would probably resolve really our cash flow needs for the district, so... But at this point, it's, it's kind of set within those certain percentages, so...
Questions, board members?
So bottom line, it costs us approximately how much again?
About $7,000.
Okay.
Yeah, that's about what our estimate is.
And have we...
I need to point out, you know, if we were to go back just about 10 years ago, we were over $1,000.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I'm sorry, Mrs. Fisher, did...
No, just, it's, the note size is up too. How much, let's say, like, last year did we...
Well, if you look on that, that sheet two, it's probably about one and a half million.
Okay, right, as you say, because I didn't think we always did, okay.
It, it just gives us, I guess, a little bit of, in terms of what we need.
So you don't necessarily borrow the total $2 million, it's just what your need is.
Exactly. And I think at one point in, I think, June, we actually borrowed like $500,000 for a few days. And then we borrowed a little more and we paid it all back, so, yeah.
Yeah, they're waiting on the walk-through.
I'll move to approve the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue application anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in the amount not to exceed $2 million as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second. So moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing a taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory note for cash flow purposes in an amount not to exceed $2 million as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carried. Approve those school board minutes. We have regular enclosed session minutes from July 22nd and closed session meeting minutes from July 29th. As different people were at those meetings, we'll need to do them individually. So questions? I was looking for a motion to approve the July 22nd.
I move to approve the minutes of the July 22nd, 2019, regular enclosed session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the minutes of July 22nd, 2019, regular enclosed session school board meeting as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Motion carried. Second meeting, looking for a motion to approve July 29th.
I move to approve the minutes of the July 29th, 2019, closed session school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second? I'll second. So moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the July 29th, 2019, closed session school board meeting as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Epstein.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Epstein.
Motion carried. General and other fund bills, Mr. Trump?
Have any, call Mrs. Ingersoll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That's what happened, so I didn't just like...
She made the motion.
I knew I was one minute to do that, too, because when you start rotating, I forget which one's coming.
There's a tally from now.
It's good, I'm gonna have to like start right at that. Dang it.
That was way too much.
I went so long without doing it.
The general and other fund bills this evening covers checks number 136842 through 137009, wire transfers 94 through 107, and ACH checks 11 through 18 in the combined amount of $1,602,779.23. And then there's a memo providing some additional information on several of the bills in your packet. And then a copy of the treasures report through the month of June is also there and that represents probably as close to actual final audited numbers, just to let you know. Because our audit was last week and they completed most of the field prep last week.
I had a question, the Moon 360. Is that something we do here or is that something that the student goes?
The student goes, so it's actually a school located in East Troy or just outside of East Troy.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we talked about that last time.
Okay, so it's not just, just, it's not just a class, it's all the classes?
It's the school all day.
It's a school.
Oh, okay, I got the impression from the notes, I was thinking it was just a class and that, that's why it was a question. Right, that's, right.
That's the question, yeah.
But that's why I was wondering where it was located, so now I know what we're talking about, so, okay.
I did have one question. The Winnant County Community School, it says it represents a yearly membership to the property. What does that mean?
Property and cash, it would be property and cash, insurance and co-op.
Oh, okay.
They serve as fiscal agent within the co-op. So that's why it's made to that school district.
Got it.
Yeah.
Any questions? For a motion to approve our general and other fund bills.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of August 12th, 2019, check numbers 136842 to 137009, wire transfers 094 to 107, and ACH check numbers 011 to 018 in the combined amount of $1,602,779.23 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of August 12th, 2019, checks numbers 136842 to 137009, wire transfers 094 to 107, ACH check numbers 011 to 018 in the combined amount of $1,602,779.23 as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Motion carried. Reported discussion on seclusion restraint.
Good evening, I'm Rita Gaffes, I'm the Director of Special Education and People's Services. And due to the fact that we do have some new board members here tonight, for some of you, this is old information, but for the new board members, that may not have heard anything about what seclusion and restraint is in the school system. I thought I'd just give you a little bit of information before I make the annual required presentation that DPI requires us to make to you, okay? So you should know that this act does apply to both regular and special education students, all public schools and our charter school. But it does not apply to law enforcement officers. So our SRO is not under this same obligation, okay? So if we do have to call in the SRO or the police at that point, we should be backing off and not doing anything because we have called for help, okay? So the definition of a physical restraint is restriction that immobilizes or reduces the ability to move freely the torso, the arms, or the legs, or the head of a student. And seclusion is the confinement of a student away from other students in an area. And the key here is they are physically prevented from leaving, okay? And we'll talk a little bit more about that. The use of physical restraint or in seclusion in public schools is only used and can only be used when there's a clear, present, and imminent risk of physical harm to self or others. It can only be used when there are no contraindications to its use because of medical conditions. You know, if there'd be a student that would have some... You know, if there'd be a student that would have some certain kind of medical condition, that would preclude that you cannot use it. The degree and a force and the length of the seclusion must be consistent and reasonable as not to provide any risk of danger to the student. And you cannot use any prohibited maneuvers. All of our staff that have the possibility of engaging in seclusion and restraint are trained in nonviolent crisis intervention where the main emphasis is on de-escalation and not getting to seclusion and restraint. That is our goal, is that we don't want to seclude or restrain. We only can do that if there are clear, present, imminent physical risks to self or others. And so we are trained in the maneuvers that are legal, okay? And then the company that we use would back us up if anything would happen.
You said all staff members.
No, that are, would have the likelihood.
How do you define likelihood? You can't, I mean, special ed, and you can classify people, but you don't know. I think this is something that we should have a, at least exposure on in-service. So all faculty and staff members understand what is and isn't acceptable.
Okay, all staff do receive information on de-escalation. All all staff have received a review of that, so that is everybody. They do not all receive the training in the physical maneuvers. As we, I don't think that's something that we really want. So the de-escalation part, yes, but you want to have a team that is a cohesive team trained that knows how to work together and they are called. That's the recommendation of the the company and the training that we receive. Not to train your whole staff.
I think there's some areas that are more prevalent to make sure. You know, fire ed where there's bats or sticks or that. Shop classes where there's chisels and saws. I think there's some that we might want to look a little bit further into to at least make those people more aware of what I can and can't do before we get into a situation.
I certainly can do that, yeah. To train them in the physical maneuvers, I I wouldn't recommend that. And I don't think that the company would recommend that. But to train them in what they can and can't do, yes, I can certainly do that.
Thanks for the suggestion, Paul.
We don't want, we don't want maneuvers or techniques that don't give adequate attention to protecting the child's head. We want to make sure that we're always doing that. You don't want to have anything that's on the floor that might cause any type of chest compression or on the diaphragm or the abdomen. Weight or pressure on the student's neck or, you know, in some type of an odd, you know, position so that they might injure themselves. And of course, there would be no corporal punishment and there would be nothing having to do with any type of artif, you know, anything that would restrain them that is, what's the word I'm looking for? You know, like a rope or.
No mechanical.
No, mechanical, thank you. I'm getting to that, mechanical. Yeah, no mechanical restraints are allowed. I was ahead of myself. It's not physical restraint to touch a student on the shoulder, hands, arms, or to comfort them or to touch their back or anything like that, okay? That is not considered physical restraint. It is when you do not allow the free movement of the arms, the legs, the torso, okay? Seclusion, again, should only be used when there's a clear, present, imminent risk of physical harm to self or others. And so that's similar to restraint. There has to be.
I just want to mention, Rita, like the CPI restraints that are taught, they're very different from what you would see with like law enforcement.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
To the point where they're almost good luck with a high school age kid.
Yeah, exactly. It's very difficult, yeah.
It might be, okay, if someone grabs your hair, this one might work where you're smashing their head down. But it's not like a martial art or something where if someone's coming with a chisel, they've got some great CPI moves.
Yeah.
That's not it. I mean, it's, yeah, very limiting and and for example, if the kid, and I used to be CPI trained at a facility, once you go to a ground, I mean, that's not a move.
Now you have to let go.
Yep, you have to let go when to go to the ground.
Yeah.
Yep.
And police, what do you do? You take them to the ground.
Exactly.
So it's a very, it's a very limiting, like Rita said, the goal is to use the de-escalation because they're kind of useless. I don't want to say they're useless because they are used to escort or get kids to the location.
They do teach you, you know, defensive stance and defensive maneuvers. You know, it's your first, while you're trying to de-escalate the student.
And the first time a student, you have to encounter a student in that way, it may come as a surprise to them, but they learn very quickly what the teacher can or cannot do.
They know, yeah.
They know, so, yeah.
And it's interesting.
But but the vast majority, like Rita said, the de-escalation techniques were so helpful. And my two years of working in group, I never had to initiate a restraint.
Yeah.
Because I really took to heart the de-escalation piece.
Didn't, kind of along the same lines, but didn't Greg used to teach a class? I don't know if it was de-escalation.
That's the CPI.
Okay, because he was trained in it and he could train others.
Now our, now our school psychologists we have in our district, and we have one high school teacher, you have to have quite an extensive, it's a two or three day training.
Right, right.
And it's quite expensive. And our school psychologists are all up for that this year, so our budget in that area, NBCI is up this year because they are renewed and they receive their training as a trainer. And then they are the ones that perform the training here. Right, I don't do it. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Y'all, when you're secluding a student, again, this is not permitting them to leave an area. We do have seclusion rooms in our district. They all have windows, they're all padded. Again, it has to be constant supervision. You have to be watching the child through the window. Seclusion is no longer used when they are not a risk to self or others. They will check, are you calm? When you're calm, you can come out. Let me know if you're calm, come out. And again, adequate access to bathrooms, drinking water, all this seems very common sense. But years ago, the reason they had to have this in the act is because years ago, there were kids who were kept in closets and, you know, not given proper ventilation, not given water breaks, you know, and for much longer times than they were allowed to be, or that was reasonable. And I'm not saying our school district, I'm just saying that's why the law had to be written like this because it was abused, so. And our rooms all have, meet these requirements, okay? There are no locks or latches or any fixtures available to the students so that they might hurt themselves or be locked in.
Now, my question, if we had a lockdown and we had children in there because there was a danger in the school, what would you do in those classrooms since you can't lock the door?
The classrooms have locks, but the seclusion rooms are within the classroom.
But if you have a child.
I might get everybody huddled in the seclusion room to be honest.
I just wonder what you do for security, what we do.
So the the regular classroom, so all of our seclusion rooms are within a classroom.
Oh, they are within a classroom.
Yes.
I thought we had some that were separate and found in.
They're in, they're in a classroom, accessible from a classroom.
Oh, okay, so you would just move them into the classroom.
Well, the, no, they're, they're within, so you block the classroom doors, they're within the classroom. It's like a closet within a classroom, but it's bigger.
I thought it was a full room, I thought I just remembered a full room.
No, they're.
Okay, small, okay.
Can staff shut the door on the opposite side of the seclusion?
Yes, right, and then they're looking in in the window.
So the staff put their foot in.
No, because that's why they're putting theirs, because they might, their, the risk of harming the teacher themselves.
But they're allowed to shut the door on the students.
Yes, that's, that's, if they're prohibited from leaving, you know. Sometimes it's 30 seconds, sometimes it may be more minutes than that. But we try to keep it at a duration that is consistent with the age of the child, just like you would do a timeout for your students, as long as they can, if they can pull themselves together and not be a risk, you know.
Is this different than the room where we have, like where they can calm down?
Sensory, yes.
So that's probably what I'm thinking of, the sensory.
The sensory room has access from the outside hallway.
Okay.
And that one has a lock, coming out.
Okay, all right, see, that's probably what I'm thinking of because I probably have not.
There's no latches on this, it's a free swinging door.
Okay.
Well, it free swings one way.
Right.
It won't work one way.
Free swing.
It's like the old bar.
No, no.
One way, okay, so they can hold it shut with their body. Okay, so and that's, and that's what they basically do is they hold it shut with their body. Some kids, you know, just need to be in there and you don't even have to hold the door shut because they're just in there calming themselves down. But if a kid is violent and banging on the door, then you have to. Oh, so these are what is not seclusion, you know? Telling a kid to take a walk or to step outside the classroom, that's not seclusion, so. So wanted to talk about the notification that's required. There has to be a report written. I I get access to all those reports, they're sent through our Ediclima system. And you have 24, or 24 business days, 24 hours. However, I, my staff cannot leave the school day before that report is sent in to me and sent to the parents. So I am overly and above what the law requires. They have to notify the student's parents that day that it has occurred. Most often, my people will notify within the hour of when it's happened. They won't even wait until the end of the day. And within two business days, there has to be a written report. Again, we have that on Ediclima, it's very easily accessible. And again, the report is written before they go home for the school day. And then it is available to the parents right away that night. I don't, I don't wait three days. I want to be open and transparent. So here I am before September 1st, it's August 12th, right? I'm giving this report to you and I have to report to you the number of incidents of seclusion and the number of restraints that took place and the total number of students involved and the number of students with disabilities. I have to report to you, and I'll do that in just a couple of slides. No one can use physical restraint or seclusion unless they've been trained. And they are, you have to have training and anybody who's engaged in our school has had that training. And keep a record of the training received by the staff. And so we have that available as well. Our school psychologists keep all that. And we have a validated program. So here's the report from this year. I'm happy to report that it is down quite a bit from last year. Do you want to maybe control minus one? Thank you, Jason. So that's as simple as our report is, the number of incidents of seclusion is how many times a student was secluded, how many restraints were used in the school year, how many students were involved in those, and the number of students with disabilities. And I believe the number of students with disabilities is exactly the same as students involved. There were no seclusions or restraints used with students that did not have IAPs. But our numbers are significantly reduced from last year, as well as the numbers from Lakewood were significantly reduced from last year. So our totals were significantly down this year from a year ago, yeah, which is good. I think, you know, we provided that extra de-escalation training and I think that that, and reviewed that. And I think that was, has been helpful. We have, and our teachers are veteran staff, and sometimes it just depends on whether a student is getting more help from the outside, medical help, family help, therapy, medication, it can be all kinds of reasons. Just a change in environment, et cetera, so. And again, it can depend on whether a student has moved in or out, can make a difference in our numbers as well.
So just a question on that total number of students involved and then number of incidents. It's like 55 and so it's saying that there's six students that have had 55 incidents. Is that correct of seclusion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're, repeat, repeat.
Right.
Okay.
Keep in mind that, keep in mind that Jackson, and maybe you don't know this, Mr. Scarrow, that Jackson is the home of our specialized program for students with significant behavioral and mental health needs. And so that is why Jackson's number is.
That is where, I think.
So kind of, okay, yeah, so that's why the number looks disproportionate there. Because when, when, I don't want to duplicate services in another building, you know, because we have a program here at Jackson. When we see there's incidents of seclusion and restraint increasing at the other two elementary schools, at Tibbetts and Westside, we will then have an IEP to see if they're, you know, the least restrictive and maybe to change the least restrictive environment.
Thank you.
So, I mean, I love to see that there are no incidents at the high school, but what do you attribute that factor to going from elementary to middle school and then all of a sudden it's zero?
I think there's several. One, it's almost, it's almost impossible.
Impossible to do it, yeah, because of the physical size, yeah.
Right. Some kids with more significant behavioral problems might go to a different school by that time.
Okay.
They might choose another opportunity where just the change in environment has, is enough that, you know, they, they don't need that. Another adolescent is moving, you know, we're out of that, you know, intense. And in high school, it can still be pretty intense regarding puberty, but I mean, I'd say. And I think there's that risk by the time they get to high school that they, it's kind of like, yeah, they probably. Please send me.
When I would have a, a teacher call and say, hey, Johnny's in my class, he's refusing to leave the classroom. I would go down to the classroom, I would walk in very quietly, I'd squat down next to Johnny and I'd whisper to him and say, hey, I'm sorry that you're upset. I'd love for you to come down to the office and talk to me. And if he'd be like, leave, no, or whatever, I'd say, that's fine. You've got 30 seconds, I'm calling law enforcement, they'll come and cuff you and get you out of the room.
Because they don't have to follow the same.
Every single time, okay, fine.
Okay.
And they get us.
Okay.
It's, there's that certain level where, you know, it doesn't happen as often, but they also, okay, we're not going hands-on.
Our high school teachers are trained, you know, the special ed staff is all trained, but. Okay, I mean, at some point, it's like, what risk are you putting the staff and faculty at?
We see, we typically see it really drop as they go from the middle, you know, as they go from elementary to middle school, to middle school to high school.
Yeah.
I can't even think, I could look back to see, we didn't even have any high schools since I've been here.
Some of it could be maturity and understanding, and understanding how they work and.
We don't even have a seclusion room at the high school.
Right.
Any questions, Juan? It's not my favorite report to give you every year, but.
Is there, is there any benefit to having the kids, I mean, there's six students between West and Tibbetts. And they're talking about those kids being at Jackson and having them with more staff and.
Say that again?
Well, the incident I'm looking at, Tibbetts and at Westside.
Yes.
I mean, because we have the program at Jackson.
Right.
Is it ideal to have those students all together instead of having them all separated in the pre-elementaries?
Well.
Having them in.
That, that's an IEP decision. And so it's made individually for each child. We try to keep a child in the least restrictive environment for as long as possible. When we get to a point where, you know, the student's education is just suffering so much from the behavior, we have to try something different. And a different environment is one way to look at that.
Some of those students, some of those numbers that you see are reflecting, reflecting incidents that took place at Westside or possibly Tibbetts where the student has not placed at Jackson in the ACE program. Does that make sense?
Oh, that makes sense from what I felt last year.
Because it doesn't, yeah, they're going to have several incidents before they get.
We can't duplicate service, you know, when I've got, you know, one teacher's time is being taken up all day long with one student that, and he's not learning. And then the education of the other students is interrupted so much. You have to weigh that. But it's an individual education plan decision that's made by the team. And and let me tell you, our staff does not take this lightly. I mean, when a kid has to leave Tibbetts or Westside to come to Jackson, I I've seen teachers who tear up, you know, because they're.
They feel like they failed.
They feel like they failed, they, you know, and they, they feel like, well, maybe I should have tried or maybe I should, yeah. They feel very responsible and it's the commitment from that staff, even though they know it probably is the best thing at the time for the student. It's very hard for them. They do not take it lightly. It's not like, you know, teachers are like, oh, let's just send him over to Jackson. No, it's not like that at all.
Any questions?
Hopefully, more upbeat report the next time I'm on. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, I think that is positive on the, the amount of progress that we've made. When we first started the ACE program, I mean, we had. When we first started the ACE program, I mean, we had, I believe, Rita, if we went back, I mean, there was a year or two where the restraints were above eighty, I believe, in the ACE program.
Last year was a rough one, last year.
Yeah. And sometimes a lot of those can be involved with just one student. Like you say.
Remember how many days you're in school?
Right, right.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Rita.
First reading of revised policies.
There's a number of the revised policies. The co-curricular policy was tabled and revisited with the policy committee. I'll go ahead and pull that one up first. And. Okay, let me blow this up a little bit larger. This is the version, showing the proposed changes. The first one here, the GPA was relatively simple. They just wanted to align it with the GPA of the point value of a C minus, which is a one point seven, a one point six five is between a D plus and a C minus. So they wanted to adjust that point value to be reflective of that. And then we did a, a lot of work related to the, the different categories and the, trying to clean up and make it more of an all encompassing fit. And so that's where you'll see like this period of analogy, one of the meetings, category one, you see that struck because we're trying to group them more into that, a co-curricular, you know, being all inclusive there. Changing language to, you know, a student instead of an athlete because we're incorporating its inclusive of clubs, co-curriculars, any sort of extreme event. Changing the language to include all classes, not just the first class. And that's, I think Dan does a nice job of using the discretion while keeping my kids on that. So language change here, this would now read consuming or possessing alcoholic beverages, controlled substances, tobacco products, or e-cigarettes, vaping is considered unacceptable and is a co-curricular code violation. And then we added language down here. So you'll see we struck the selling piece and the providing and we added language to here. Where a student who sells, provides, or transports with the intent to distribute or has a gathering, is home or property. So we included, because this is a more severe penalty, the violation, instead of being considered a first offense, is considered a second offense. So that is a difference where before you could sell and that would be a first offense, which was the same as consuming. We felt that anyway, that's, how is that different than hosting a party? Then this is all new language, yes. Now, this is adding language back in on, on the attending of the gathering. It does provide provision for students who say they have a friend, hey, I'm really messed up, I need to be picked up. If the student goes, picks up the kid and is not participating or hanging out at the party as determined by, you know, the investigation, then that would not be a violation. It also has language in there that victims of sexual assault and bystanders who report a sexual assault will basically have amnesty related to that violation because we wouldn't want someone not to report, hey, I saw so-and-so get sexually assaulted, but I don't want to say anything because I'll get a co-curricular violation. You'd like to think that someone would not, you know, worry about that, but it happens, it's happened. So we wanted to make sure that that wasn't an obstacle. And I've seen a lot of colleges moving to that as well, where they have, within their honor codes to encourage the students supporting other kids to protect them. We changed this, in relation, instead of persistent, just as gives the principal more leeway that disruptive behavior or any kind of behavior and violation or subject to penalties under the according high school district policy. So if it's a severe enough, say it's a, a fight, doesn't have to be persistent, that hey, you've had multiple fights now. It's, you know, I'm sorry, that's, that was enough that we're going to.
I think I'm looking at the, the ones with the changes and persistent is still in here.
Yeah, the one that was attached isn't really showing us at all. It's not.
Right.
It doesn't have any of the changes.
No, I know, because we looked at those at committee, but it still says persistent.
I wonder why it doesn't, because I just clicked this right from.
No, mine's, mine's got a purple line through it.
Oh, I, I took the one that was attached to my, to my.
It's not green, mine's purple.
No, no, mine isn't, it doesn't have any color in it. It had the highlighting.
Right on the bottom of.
That's right, yeah.
And he's got the same one. And persistent, there are a lot of the changes that are in there, but persistent is still in there.
I wonder if it's because we all have, yeah. Bill, what is your show? I mean, it's the same documents. I'm wondering if there's something in the Google Doc setting that isn't showing. I mean, the one up here is my. Right here. So this is, yeah. Are you in editing mode? There is this showing up.
Yeah.
View only.
View only. I don't know what's going on with the Google Doc setting.
Okay, I just, I mean, I caught that, that it just, so as long as we don't have persistent because we talked about that.
So if you can follow along, I'll just go.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine. I just want to make sure.
All right. Julie, just to make a note, as we're going through on the edited version, for some reason the docs pulling up looking different. Some of the board members aren't seeing the edits, some of them are. We'll have to look it up for docs.
Yeah, so the flagrant unsporssment language is in here.
In the future, we'll just have to shift it to a PDF file for sharing here and then, but then I can't make changes as soon as we go.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's what I have to.
Continuing to go down, cyber image, that hasn't changed. Added the unsporssment language. Now, some of the language that's included in this is boilerplate from WIAA. So this is boilerplate as well from the WIAA. Basically, if the disqualify from contest, let's see. A student is qualified from contest for a flagrant or unsporssment-like conduct is suspended from interscholastic competition for no less than the next competitive event, but not less than one complete game or meet. Note, the penalty shall be served in the sport in which the offense occurred. If that sport season is completed, then it shall be served in the next sport or sports season. So the kid gets suspended the last game of the year, you know, soccer game, and they go up cross-country the next year, they would be suspended. Any player who, in the judgment of the official, intentionally spits on strikes, slaps, kicks, pushes, or aggressively physically contacts an official at any time shall be immediately ineligible for competition a minimum of ninety calendar days from the date of the confrontation. In addition, the player is ineligible to compete for the first twenty-five percent of the next season in that same sport. I've seen this happen in football where the official's part of the field and, you know, a kid will, well, you've probably seen that a time or two in your career where the kid will intentionally run into the official in the middle of the game and act like they didn't. Haven't seen it happen much, but in a case like that, if the official's ruled that no you intentionally did that, they're out ninety calendar days and twenty-five percent of the next season. That's a WIAA rule, so we figured putting it in our co-curricular policy just helps them know those guidelines, so it's review. Co-curricular code, changing the language, moved it from athletic to, Dan's really our activities director is what he is and he has been for several years, so giving that clarification, activities director. This process on the reporting investigation, we wanted to give some specific language so it didn't look like the, the appeals process of when you get investigated is redundant there or going to the same person. So it is submitted that the athletic director shall arrange a conference with the student to take place within five days or a reasonable amount of time after the allegations are made. The student in question may continue to practice and compete until the initial conference is had. The activities director shall have the direct discretion to modify the minimum penalty based on the nature of the offense. And it says, adding language, students are expected to tell the truth throughout any investigation. If it's found that a student has lied or otherwise impeded an investigation, their penalty may be increased. Now, this is WIAA. New requirements, any student which has been charged or convicted of a felony is immediately ineligible for all participation in WIAA activities until the student has satisfied all of the requirements ordered by the court in declaring the sentence served, including probation, duty service, and any other court orders. That can end up being a very lengthy sentence. And we don't have control over that. That's the WIAA. So you can have a kid do something their freshman year and be on court order probation for three years and they're ineligible for WIAA sports while on that. It does not carry over from middle school. So if you have somebody who did something in middle school, they get a clean slate going into high school. Doesn't matter if they're under court order for the next ten years, it's only related to high school.
And that's only for athletes. It's not going to, there's no reading of that, that it would go into other co-curricular activities.
Right, this is for the WIAA sports. One of the discussions that we had for, the reason why we don't want to mimic that is we want those kids involved and engaged. We don't want them cut off. Co-curriculars are important to that development of the students, so we want them to be able to be involved in. This is just a chart that gives you an idea based on the number of events, what the suspensions would look like. We talked about just possibly deleting that one there. I think we decided to leave it in for now because it's, you know, one-third people can do the math, but it's, it's just a conversion chart. Let me minimize this a little bit more. Then we did change or add quite a bit different language here. We felt that if a student does get a co-curricular violation, we wanted this as a step for the students upon receiving a violation, the student's counselor will be notified and the student may be required to complete an AODA assessment, enroll in treatment, and show proof of active participation in the recommended program with a qualified provider prior to returning to competition. We put in here, may be required. That way, you know, the activities director, they can use their discretion. If it's not something related to AODA issues, then, you know, it may not be required. It also, we understand that active participation in recommended programs, some of these programs take months to get into. So we're not going to hold a kid from continuing to participate in other events, but they need to demonstrate that they're working towards that and getting in the program. When the penalty cannot be completed within the sports season, including the WIAA tournament, definitely will continue the athletes next sports season. This is related to athletes. Athletes who are ineligible during the WIAA tournament for any reason may not appear in uniform, participate in awards, and may not participate in awards ceremony at the WIAA tournament. So again, that's a WIAA rule. Changed from athletic code to co-curricular code, then added a student who transfers from any school, whether or not a member school, with a status of ineligibility for disciplinary reasons and as a result of another state association regulation or sanction, retains such status at his or her new school for the same period as decreed by the former school. Again, that's another WIAA mandate there. So a kid comes from Illinois and has a three-game suspension, they have to serve three games. Appeal procedures, the, just adding that it's the activities director that they have to notify. Then the activities director will receive a written appeal no later than five days from the receipt of the student's written infraction. The student is ineligible during the appeal process. The activities director will assemble an appeals committee, but he or she does not vote. The appeals committee will consist of an assistant principal. We remove students from the appeals committee, two teachers, and two varsity coaches to add the numbers back in. We felt that the students created potential confidentiality issues or lack of students being forthright as the reasons why they are doing that or.
HIPAA violations.
HIPAA violations potentially, yeah. Because they're not employees of the school that should care. The appeals committee shall keep all student information confidential. Meeting will be audio recorded for the keeping of minutes. We felt that it was important to, it's pretty simple to set up, take it forward, then we can have the minutes if any questions ever come up down the road. Or if we get sued and it has to go to court, now you're not relying on testimony of the people there, we have a transcript of it, like expulsion. On the activities director changing. Let's see, the committee may ask questions to assist them in determining guilt or non-guilt or whether or not the penalty should be modified due to extenuating circumstances. These questions can also help in determining the penalty that would be assessed. Previously, they were just supposed to ask questions related to guilt or non-guilt, yet the whole point of the appeals process was to seek clemency or some other positive solution. So in order to take that into consideration, we want to give them the leeway to look at that. Applying completion of the appeal procedure, decision that may, the accused may appeal in writing the committee's decision to the principal within two business days of the committee's decision. The principal, after hearing and or investigating the committee's record, may modify the athletic directors' and or appeals committee determinations and or penalty enforcement. That language, we just cleaned up some green, but the spirit of what was always there was there. So ultimately, that final check is that principal to review the appeals committee. And then it stops that appeals process. It keeps it from getting to the superintendent, school board level where you don't want to be caught up in those. Travel, that's just cleaning up the language there. And then you'll see on categories, you'll see, well, this is where we struck the categories. You mentioned the categories that we used to have. We felt we've added the language to make it so that it's just co-curricular activities and there's no longer a category one activity, two, or a three. There was some inequity in how that was applied depending on what event you were in when they were broken out in categories. But first offense, student will lose competition privileges. We changed that from participation to competition privileges and/or travel rights. Because when a kid gets a co-curricular violation, you still want them to go to the practices or the, the meetings. The competition that they're losing access to. And as for up to one-third of the season, and in this language here, students in elected positions will lose their elected office during their suspension. Some organizations may require removal from the organization or their elected position after one violation. In those cases, the organization's bylaws will supersede the co-curricular code penalties. Now, there's certain chapters, national level organizations, where they have bylaws and requirements at that national level that doesn't matter what we want to do locally. They have, well, similar to the WIAA. Second offense, the student will lose competition privileges and or travel rights in the first critical event. It's two-thirds of the season. Third offense is for one calendar year. And that's the changes. Questions, concerns, or thoughts?
I just want to say thank you to the committee that really dug into this and made the changes that they felt were necessary. I thought, I thought they did a great job.
We're going to try something here.
Yeah, and the administration too, yeah, everybody was involved.
For others who, so Matt, you see the markups?
I do.
And see, Byrne, you're on there too.
Yeah, see, I, I don't.
I did it one time.
Let me try something.
I have two, two edits online.
Refresh, see if you see that now.
Just refresh this.
Nothing still? Hmm. All right, I'm just trying to pinpoint, is it within your Google settings that we need to go and, and check or change if we're gonna look at them that way, or someone else's? Okay. Yeah, I need to look at who has that.
Wait a minute.
For the time's sake, maybe I'll look at this after.
Yeah. I'm gonna try and change what I, I went, I went back and refreshed the agenda, went back in, and now I get.
Yeah, see, I refreshed an idea, I cannot.
Okay. I refreshed the agenda.
I did too.
Oh, okay.
I don't see it.
And now I have it.
Well, I just changed your setting though to edit mode instead of view mode.
Yeah, what kinds of pages now?
Oh yeah, now mine, I think mine's working, it's refreshing now.
Oh, okay.
I refreshed the.
Other one?
The school board one.
It didn't work for me, just so you know.
No, well, you need to see the, the language.
Yeah.
Oh, yours still neither.
I refreshed it.
That's weird, mine, now mine does.
Now yours does.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna, I am suspecting that maybe it's because you have to have edit mode to see how.
Possibly.
So I'm wondering, so I just added all of you to edit mode, just be careful not to edit it now.
No, no, I don't want to edit it.
But see if, um, refresh and see if it shows up now.
Okay. Oh yeah, I get all kinds of.
Yes.
All right, so that's what it is, you've gotta have the edit mode in order to see the proposed edits. Okay. All right, well, we know that moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, so everybody should have, be able to see the edits.
Mine's like a bird.
I'll just, I'll remember that in the future then, for the rest of time. So, looking at, continuing on co-curricular, because this is a fun one. Um, three seventy, this one's pretty simple, and again, if you don't have it, it's, I just need to head you to the edit mode.
Yeah.
Let's go back and do that, if you want. So it's changing it to co-curricular policy, making sure that we have the same non-discrimination language in that.
Yeah, so you don't.
And then we're proposing to delete three seventy, the rule.
Yep.
Because it's no longer needed or relevant, built within that policy, that may be part of what you're looking at.
That's what he was looking, because I went and looked, it's like, oh, that's.
So we're proposing to delete that.
It has a one, two, and three.
Altogether.
Right.
Yeah. And then we have the Start College Now program, um, striking that language, beginning July one, two thousand, we'll pass that date, so that's not really relevant anymore. And then, the district will pay, we struck instead of for no more then, we put for up to the equivalent of combined total of eighteen post-secondary credits for any course they're taking through Start College Now program or the Early College Credit Program, we have the language, the district may pay for additional post-secondary credits depending on the student's chosen pathway. So it's removing that hard cap of eighteen credits with our options, career, and college program, and that gives them the flexibility to utilize those gateway courses, um, like we talked about previously. They typically run about three hundred and seventy-five dollars on a course, um, so the margins are, are good for us on that, that we can support. Um, any questions on the policies? I know there was a lot, but it was, I think, good work on the, the co-curricular policy and incorporates it into, to the one.
All right, recommendations that district administration.
It's the season for hiring. Uh, okay, I printed this one off for me, just so I can try to make it a little easier here. Um, yeah, so, we have Danielle Dunham, she's a Westside art teacher, want to wish her really well, she's really had a strong desire to pursue her administrative, um, career, and, you know, we were working with her here, but she had an opportunity in Silver Lake, um, to take a position as a being of students, so she went into that position, and we want to wish her well in, in her, her new endeavor, and hopefully the time that we spent with her will help her in her next step in her career, so we're very happy, happy for her. And then we also have the resignation of, or, these are people that they were hired, but they're not joining us this year, plans have changed, that happens sometimes in the part-time positions, they were, have the tutors, Alexis Coyne and Sean Beesbier, we want to thank you for considering us to work and wish them well.
Sean was actually with us.
Oh, Sean, it was.
And Alexis is, is that situation.
And, okay. Then we have a resignation of Robert Hannah as the girls tennis coach, who won't be coming back next year. And I have a lot of appointments, I'll just go through these. Um, Natalie Herb, she'll be joining us as a fourth grade teacher, uh, she'll be replacing Steve Nelson, who accepted a position in his hometown over in Milton, and Natalie is joining us, I forgot where Natalie's coming.
Kenosha.
Kenosha, most recently, she leaves and lives in Lake Geneva. And then we have a, Amanda Rowley, who's served a number of long-term subpositions for us in the school district, including, um, in our classes, she'll be joining us as a Westside art teacher, replacing Danielle Dunham. We have Carolyn Kaisley, will be joining us as a middle school social studies teacher, and she'll be replacing Kelly Vermeister for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, who's taken a, a leave. And then Tricia Leva is joining us as an EL teacher, you might more commonly know as an ESL teacher, from, she's joining us from Delvin Darian, and this is a additional position for us this coming year with the influx of students, um, and the needs for our ESL language, we're utilizing a transfer of service, which allows us to increase our budget to cover the costs to hire that, that teacher. So she's very experienced, um, began her career in California, but most recently has been in the Delvin Darian school district for the last five years. Linnea Bass is joining us as a tech intern for the district. Erica Anderson is going to continue, um, her payroll specialist duties for the school district. Um, Jane Hammer Prznowski is, uh, coming on as a cook for us at Jackson. Vicky Bedews, if any of you know if I'm mispronouncing her name, let me know.
Bedewsie.
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 Thank you. Because I, I'll introduce someone, or the principals, or people will introduce some of the new staff, but, uh, she's joining us as a special education teaching assistant. Chandler Kaiser was selected to serve as an avid teaching assistant, he'll be replacing, uh, Rachel Wuss. And then Shannon Schumacher, Terry Hanson, Megan Bulow, Hannah Wattenbulow, and Thomas Knoll are all joining us as part-time avid tutors. Kyle Hoskins is joining us as a girls assistant basketball coach, he'll be replacing John Tremontic for the, um, nineteen, twenty school year, and I want to thank John for his service. And then we have Chandler Kaiser, um, who has been selected to replace Beezy Kaiser for the girls soccer head coach position. Kristen Kilkenny will be transferring to a, a part-time school counselor position, shared between the middle school and the high school, probably spending the bulk of her time at, at the high school. And then Todd Galani will be transferring from the middle school health teacher to fill the, uh, middle school counselor position, replacing Kristen Kilkenny. And then Jeff Tisher will be transferring from middle school eighth grade math to the, become the middle school health teacher, and, um, then Elsa Sanchez will be joining us as a special ed teaching assistant, and Ellen Goitowsky.
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 All right. Will transfer from Westside to Tibbetts, replacing Jose Webber. See, I got the Spanish on. Over the nineteen, twenty school year.
Just a question on the avid.
Yes.
The difference between the teaching assistant and the tutors, is that full-time, part-time?
Yes, that's the difference.
That's the difference, okay.
Yep. And those tutors sometimes come for like an hour to move a week, which is why we have so many of them, because it's based on their college schedule and their availability is.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions?
Did Kelly Vermeister, did she give a resignation?
I was just taking a yearly advance.
Any questions? Or is it looking for a motion to approve?
Someone?
In a second.
Okay.
So moved in second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? School gifts?
All right, for school gifts this evening, there we go. We've got two to present, the Elkhorn Lions Club has donated iPads to the special education department, valued at a thousand dollars, and the Tibbetts Elementary PTA donated two hundred and eighty dollars to the music program for the proceeds of their recent fundraiser. I want to thank both the Lions Club and the Tibbetts PTA for their generous donation.
Looking for a motion to approve our generous gifts?
Someone?
In a second.
I'll cycle.
So moved in second to approve the gifts of the Elkhorn Lions Club and the Tibbetts Elementary PTA as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Nonsense.
All right, and we have open houses are scheduled for August twenty-sixth, and this is something I probably should have thought of a long time ago, but I know that we have some school board members who have kids, um, on that night.
It did be last week, like, yeah.
So my, my question is, I mean, and it may not make it any better for somebody, because the middle school, the seventh and eighth grade on the twenty-sixth, there is a length of time, so it depends on what grade your kids are in, but would the, the board be open to moving from the twenty-sixth to the twenty-seventh? I mean, is that something you want?
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter to me.
I'll be out of town on, on the twenty-seventh.
It affects me less this year than it does last.
Does it make a difference?
I have a child in elementary school, middle school, and high school. I am out of.
Yeah, I've had that. So for me, it doesn't matter.
All right, then let's just leave it on the twenty-sixth, and my wife will figure it out. I, I told her, we'll just go around, I'll use my superintendent, uh, privilege, and we'll go around at three o'clock or something.
Okay, let me borrow the page from three thirty until four.
No whistles, so go to the senior school.
Is that, is that?
It's that, yeah.
Maybe I want to rethink my decision. I only have a little bit, it's three of you, right? You've got Tibbetts too.
Yeah, you have a Tibbetts, yeah, but they started.
I think it's.
Started five.
Five.
I did a half hour at each last year. Good, they're really early for pictures.
I, I, I find either way.
You change the time, or the, you know, you change it.
Most of the ninth and or eighth grade.
Does that work better?
Have the time started seven, that would be better.
Would that be, any problem with that?
Yeah, whatever works.
I don't have a problem.
I'm flexible.
All right, then let's do the board meeting on the twenty-sixth, but do it at seven o'clock.
Yeah, that.
Okay.
Hansel was smart.
And my mother-in-law decided to fly in on the twenty-sixth and be picked up at six o'clock, so I don't know how that was.
So work.
What time is she coming in?
Six o'clock. I don't know, I'm like, oh, shit.
By the time she gets her luggage.
We'll, we'll figure it out, all right. Um, yeah. The, the student reps will be rejoining us at the next meeting, and just as a reminder, Rachel Gatchock and Kylie Gegner are, are student reps for the coming year. And then new teacher orientation starts this Wednesday at eight o'clock AM. And we do have the math teacher replaced, Jeff, he just wasn't hired early enough in the agenda, so we are fully staffed, teacher-wise.
Awesome.
Before the new teacher orientation.
And he has a reputation, new teacher orientation.
Not on wood.
Is that the one, is that the one we do upstairs?
Yes.
Because I came to that last year.
So yeah, if, if you'd like to come, um, Matt will do a welcome, there's an introduction with all the teachers, and then you're welcome to stay for an inspirational, um.
Mission vision.
I knew some, I knew some of the teachers, because they had promised ones, that was interesting.
Yes. But we, we have a decent size crew this year, and, um, yeah. How many toll are we planning on?
Twenty on or in the, in my, right now?
So that's about typical.
Yeah. So how long would?
But like, with student teachers and stuff, it's like twenty-six.
Okay. And then, yeah, then I do a little, just kind of a mission vision, here's kind of laying out what, you know, we look for in the teachers, why they were hired, kind of that overarching expedition, and they have three full days, um, Sarah heads up that new orientation, new teacher orientation planning, and it's, all the directors, everybody has segments and pieces that they do, so it's three, three full days of a, a lot of work to try to onboard them, and then we have a wonderful mentor program that goes throughout the entire year, so they'll be assigned a mentor, and, um, yeah, it's a lot, when you think about everything that we've been working on for years, that's a lot to onboard when you come in from another district.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right, we're good.
Looking for a motion to adjourn this. In a second, in a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
So do we need the motion to adjourn to close?
Uh, yeah.
To return to close.
Return to close, that's, there we go. And then we gotta do.
We do, we call for that.
So who did the motion?
Me.
I second it.
The readers and, yeah.
All right, seconded, so, we're to Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Dingerson?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.